Okay. And with Jim from Monday, just like seven, four o'clock. All right. We're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is public comments. For any of you that have not been at a regular scheduled board meeting this time, but if you have something that you need to present to the board, you need to stand and state your name, note something that is not an agenda item already or of a personal nature. And understand because it is not a board, an agenda item that you would be presenting to us, we are not, we can't respond to that, but we can certainly let them. So if there's anyone in the audience who has an issue that they need to present to the board this time.
Hi, I'm Catherine Reed and I teach here at the high school. And we didn't officially get on the agenda, so we're gonna try and get on the August meeting, but about this time every year, Mr. Weber would come to the board and remind the board about all the wonderful things that are happening in the outdoor classroom. And as sort of one of the committee members who's sort of stepped up to help keep that outdoor classroom going and thriving, I just thought I would unofficially let you all know that it is doing well, even though we're a month behind letting you know officially all the things that we're doing. We're getting lots of community support for it. The classes, the kindergarten classes, the high school classes, everything in between has been using it. We've been doing some maintenance projects. We have a fencing project made, Miss Appleby's been out there to help out with some of the landscaping and whatnot and getting some advice on that. So hopefully by August, we will have a few more sort of really particular things that we can present to you and let you know exactly what we've got on board. And remind you that of course, it's not costing you guys or anyone else a penny. We're raising our own funds and we're just really trying to keep this as a really special tribute to such a great teacher who we have in Mr. Weber. So can you think of anything else?
Yeah, I'm Brenda Bulley and I just had a few things to add to that. Received a little over seventeen hundred dollars from Broad Power Plastics. There's a, I think about a three thousand dollar donation from Byron Switto, Jane Whitey. And there's been a bridge donated, that's kind of a bridge that isn't over anything yet, but we're kind of working on that. The kids absolutely love it. We're working on a butterfly garden and some butterfly planting to get some things in there, some more trees and plants. One of the things that I worked with this spring was a bird banding project. We had David Lockman come a year ago and he came back this spring. He's from the Forest Office in Stevensville. This year, we caught in the net a flying hummingbird which could not be banded. A Downing with pecker, three cedar waxwings, a robin, and a lachrylontine. And three different classes got to partake in watching those birds be caught in the net, put in bags, and then banded. And then the children got to hold them in their hands on the release. And so we're hoping that we can go all the way through the high school with this and control biology classes and get more students involved. And Dave has just sent me an email and he said he's interested in possibly giving up one of his bird banding projects closer to Lake Como and maybe starting an official line around. So some really cool stuff going on.
Yeah, my name's Larry Liedem and I don't know if it's on the agenda or not, but it's
about the cross-country team that...
That is on the agenda.
Okay, okay. And I just wanted to, you know, show my support to be here. My daughter's Sherri, Liedem, and then also Madison. The two cross-country team or members at one that started, I guess it's Hookup with Big Sky.
We will talk about that when we get to that part of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on and to four, there's a fourth one.
No course one.
Okay, then with the other two, two applications.
We...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
No course one.
Okay, then with the other two, two applications.
We...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We were going, we're going to, we have on our agenda about three to four things down, the Safe Route to School Trail and Boarding. We're going to go again and ask, we're going to redo that on our agenda so we can get that taken care of first so individuals that are involved with that don't have to say through the whole meeting. So, our Safe Route to School.
Okay, and the Safe Routes to School, I don't know, is Trevor Iman here?
Yeah.
Trevor Iman with WGM. And then we also have specialty excavation, the contractor's involved. Just so that the public is aware of what's transpiring. A few years ago, my office applied for a Safe Route to School grant to put some walking trails around the school. The grant was a great idea. A lot of work went into it, community member Roger DeBurrito. We worked on this plan, put it together, and went up and shared it with county commissioners and hoping that they would support in just writing a letter of support for our grant. The commissioners liked the idea so much that they wanted to get involved on a greater level than that. So they offered to bring some CTEP funding behind this project. They believe CTEP and the funds that are available to the county should do things that can improve their communities in the valley. They felt that the walkways around Florence were an important part of improving the quality of life for the citizens of the valley. The county commissioners put together a plan and appropriated just over three hundred thousand dollars for this project. Sad to say though, the State's Department of Transportation did not see its way to fund the project, therefore it fell totally on the shoulders of the county commissioners, who stayed with us and backed up and decided they're gonna push forward on it. Over the course of the last couple of years, we've been in the process of, you know, looking at the project, engineering the project, making sure it met all the requirements by the state. The county hired WGM, Trevor, Trevor's engineering firm, to go ahead and to engineer this project for us. And we are now at the point where we're going to see some asphalt laid down and some trails built around here. This summer, there is a plan to try to connect the trail system in front of the Baptist Church all the way up to the park. So there will be a trail on the school district property, a paved trail that will go all the way up to Iowa Avenue and right close to the park so that anybody who wants to walk from the park to the school will have a paved path there. So it is also going to extend down the west side of Old Highway 93 along the school's property and then the Bitterroot Pines trailer toward down to Tyshue, and it will tie into the corner of Tyshue there. Now, the nice thing about this whole trail is that it's going to provide some drainage plan where it's going to take some of those big puddles of water that you see alongside of the road and capture them. It's also gonna put some nice curving in, and it's also gonna make a much better, safer crosswalk design in three different areas for kids with lighting and all of those things that will go into that. We're going to have some traffic control in terms of signage and all those things that go into it. So I have Trevor here today that is going to talk about the startup data of this project. We have specialty contracting, who's the contractor who wanted to bid to do the project. And this would be the best time for anybody who wants to ask a question, to do so, this would be the individual you'll see out there digging up your road this summer.
Like John said, I'm Trevor Iman with WGM Group. This is Greg Doughty with Specialty Excavating. We designed the project and it went to field and was let earlier this month. The notice to proceed is gonna happen on the twentieth or twenty-seventh of this month, so next Monday or the Monday after. They have sixty working days, sixty calendar days, sixty calendar days to complete the project barring any extensions due to unforeseen circumstances. And I guess I'll let Greg kind of give you a real quick overview of where they plan to start, and if you've got any questions, feel free to ask.
As Trevor said, I'm Greg Doughty, Specialty Excavating. John kind of gave a recap of where we're going with the trail. We anticipate starting down at the north end on the east side of Old Highway 93. So pretty much the concrete portion right in front of the school will be the first task to try to tackle. So going forward, we're only gonna work one side at a time. We're not gonna try to work both sides of the street that would just congest everything too tightly. So we'll be able to shift the lane slightly one way, either east or west, depending on which side of the road we're working on. Fortunately, this is a fifteen mile an hour speed zone through here, so anticipating traffic is gonna be relatively slow for us to be able to conduct a safe work environment. But yeah, it'll be under construction throughout the summer. This is the third project that I've done in the last couple of years around schools in terms of providing trails and pathways for schools. So it's an exciting project and I think the CTEP program is a neat program that the state has that allows us some funding for communities to improve their pedestrian traffic around and into their schools. So it's a neat program, I'm excited about the project, and feel free to contact me or Trevor with any questions. I'll leave you some business cards to pass around to the board members.
What other schools are you at?
Corvallis School and then Russell School in Missoula. No, same.
Did you say you were gonna start on the east side of the road?
That's what we...
Like up at the end of this sidewalk, long down?
It'll actually remove all the existing sidewalks on the east side of the road in front of the school and replace it with a seven-foot wide sidewalk and curb and sumps to take care of the drainage problems at that point. And then it'll also replace that set of stairs directly in front of the main entrance to the buildings and create ADA accessible ramps down to that entrance.
And that was one of the nice things about this whole project, that, you know, you never know until you start digging into something what you have or you don't have. And we always saw that big blue area out there of handicap parking. It's not handicap parking because it doesn't meet ADA compliance for width. The width of that parking stall is not wide enough to meet ADA compliance. Therefore, you know, we're gonna shift all of the handicap accessible parking into what is currently the staff parking area. We'll put some handicap parking stalls in that area to meet that compliance totally need to. So that's one of the nice things that we're seeing out of this project. We have some need, if somebody were to, in the future, had made an issue for us and said, you know, we need to do this for us, we would be required to make the improvement. But we're able to do it now that we have this money from CTEP to take care of this issue for us.
I was just curious, is it tied into the county trail plan that was approved earlier this year? Or has it totally been alone?
This, I believe, is a standalone project. But the interesting thing about it is it kind of does tie into the county trail plan because it will tie this school directly to the trail that goes along Highway 93. Where currently, the school isn't tied into it really because of the gaps of, you know, we don't have a paint or a concrete walkway down to the path along Long Avenue. And we really didn't have it here before either. So it's gonna help to broaden the use of that path that people want to...
Use that sidewalk on the east side and go clear down to Tyshue.
That's gonna stop about, there's gonna be a crosswalk right at the end of the school property, so a fence line right past the, I guess, past the parking lot. We're gonna put a crosswalk in and then the path on the west side will extend all the way to Tyshue.
And just so you're aware, we do have several phases to a pathway plan for Florence, and one is to do Long Avenue. But there is another plan to try to take from the school's property down to Eden's Lane and across the creek there. Because a few years ago, about three years ago, we studied this and took a look at the issues with the trails in Florence. We did it in the wintertime and we took a look at where are people walking in the snow? More of the foot traffic going in the snow. That's an easy way to tell what type of traffic you have. And we noticed there's a lot of kids that will walk down from Eden's Lane there to the school. And in the wintertime, when there's a burn cloud up on the side of the road, where's the force of kids to walk? Before some walking line and traffic. So now you're dependent upon attentive drivers for the safety of those kids. And to be honest with you, we've got a lot of high school drivers, and I don't know with the cell phone age and everything, how attentive that really is and how safe that really is. The county commissioners heard these discussions and they recognize, they want to be part of the solution. They certainly do not want to turn a blind's eye to these types of issues, and that's why they stepped right up. And I will tell you, I was very proud of the fact that, you know, they didn't blink an eye on this. And I believe they got it right when they decided to partner up with the school. And I believe everybody who has a voition to call a commissioner and thank them for their involvement on this project because it was a good choice on their part to do so.
That walking area just north of Tyshue there is dangerous right now because I've seen the kids, when they walk to school and they walk home, they'll get over and walk single file because there's just room for them without the drop off to the creek and with the bridge and stuff there for the children. And there's really not much space at all. They're barely off of the line on the highway.
So hopefully in the future, you know, we can get more effort, put together, you know, I continue to apply for Safe Routes to School monies and we're hoping that we can continue to take care of areas that we see there's need. Up Tyshue to Florence Carlton Loop is another area that we have targeted on the plan. And we believe that Tyshue's a congested area and it's a high-traffic area. And we do see a lot of kids that decide not to catch the bus and try to walk to school in the winter. Hence, it's not a good deal to walk.
What's really dangerous about Tyshue also is that in the morning, drivers coming down are facing the sun and they can't really see very well and there's not much room to get off the road. And same with the evening when they're coming up, they've got the sun in their eyes and don't have a lot of traffic. Any other questions? Will the new protocol be manned?
Yes, we're planning on manning one in front of the high school office there.
Along with the current one or instead of?
Correct, with the current one also.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Okay. We have nine new applications for non-resident students. We have five kindergarten students through second grade, one fifth grade, one tenth grade, students who would like their kindergarten school. I do have to say this with the kindergarten students, we are reaching a level at the kindergarten where we're going to be within about five students maximum outsee with these five students being approved. And to be sure where it could cause us to have to hire a new teacher at the beginning of the year if we see a spike in enrollment between now and the start of the school year. So I would ask that the board gives some consideration to this. There's one of two ways that you can handle this situation. You can handle it with approval of the odd district's tenants' applications at this time with the caveat that their applications could be withdrawn at the beginning of the school year if enrollment dictates that we need to renew them. Or you can just go ahead and ask the students to come onboarding and take a look at hiring a teacher if possible. To hire a teacher means we would have to look into our supply budgets because we currently have funded and cutbacks that would be created in our budget to hire a new person. How long? Point for discussion.
Well, I would be long to accept them on the condition that we don't have any kind of new teachers. I think we have to take them onboarding and just so you can see, we get reimbursement for these kids in the district.
Yeah, we enrolling into our districts and what ended up happening is you get the state average number belonging. So with that enrollment count at the end of September is when the count date is.
That we have to hire a teacher. We literally said we have any luck to reen from the out of district.
It would be false.
I think we should just go away, you know, go to kindergarten school because just say what's gonna happen. Our population of schools being divided, what mean outside. You said that we didn't, you know, welcome in some of the district policy, you're saying that if it was any class that becomes older numbers, that requires that to hire a new teacher, that we have the right. Doesn't say we have to. Doesn't say we have to. But we have the ability to stay where it happens and reconsider.
But one of the things I caution you on at this point is that our budget is set for this next year, even if we were to take on fifteen more kindergarten students to look to justify the keeping of students in or hiring a new teacher, we do not have the money this year for that new teacher. And that money would not be collected until, to use the average in to the next cycle, which would be next year, under your enrollment.
So you're telling us that after, if we were to justify that we're gonna get five more spots?
Correct. But you could do conditional approval. They're approved, they're approved to attend upon condition of...
Yeah, as long as they know some board clause in the stuff that happens should we get.
So it has to form the approval of the kindergarten students that, can you please make sure that the conditional thing is...
Let me answer your question though. We got five. Let's say we got a spike and we got six new enrolled students. So now you're one over, right? How do you make the decision that when you let five in, you've got your one over? Can I ask?
I believe, I believe at that point, you, what you would do is you would go to the ones that were the last applications received and systematically go back and say, okay, we're over enrollment here. These are these students out of the...
How many do we usually get from the registration? I mean, I know it's very true every year, but what would be your average?
It does vary. We, you know, we have our kindergarten roundup and kindergarten registration, but the last, we've been averaging one a week the last three, four weeks of school at the end of the year. So, you know, it's just really hard to say with how transient the population that our school registration is in, until that third week in August. So, and we usually do get a couple that has either moved in or, you know, who's parents, you know, might decide at the last minute that they want to send their kindergarten or... I'd say the chances of it that we can get... And the accreditation standard is twenty-five. And right now, we have two and one half kindergarten classes. We have a two, one kindergarten combination again this year.
What happens if David has five new ones came in, so we have to let these five be out of school because they're in the district? And then you still get some more kindergarten kids that are in the district?
You're hiring a teacher.
You don't count any, either way, they're attached to.
You're hiring a teacher. Or you're bringing an aide in. You know, we have a couple of options. One is to hire a new teacher, all right, create another section and reduce the sub-class targets to the other couple of sections that you have. Or what you could have is doing is hiring a teacher aide, replacing that classroom to reduce the pressure. The state accreditation standard found at one of the levels to, you know, how many students we need, it's plenty. And usually we can hire an aide up until like twenty-four, twenty-five, and then you're required to have a teacher at twenty-six.
I guess I was just wondering if you've had the problem even without the out of district students? And we ended up having to hire a teacher, then could you just apply him?
So that it's most likely we have already a student in the school and say...
Well, we have a couple of families here who have other siblings that are already on the school. And that would make it really difficult for the family to, um, go to... So it'd be my, it'd be my choice to step with the possibility that things might change once we have thirty registration, which is what you're saying, possibly, however.
Yeah, it's usually, I think it's seventy.
Maybe that's my, that's a little, I don't think it's a big problem to have.
Yeah.
It's a remote, it's so remote that it's a very difficult.
But just the things you don't plan for again.
Yeah, that's true. But who wants to tell a little kid that? We got you in school unless this happens, so we should know pretty much if they're coming.
And two, you've seen the size of the entire of these classrooms, they're twenty, you know, active little bodies. It's a lot, so, you know, even now, I'm getting a little bit of, you know, this, this out of the district, that, you know, I'm finding some reality that in being less interested in the district, rather than...
And my school.
Yeah. I'm pretty happy. She says Appleby wants to know if, I mean, I know we have some of the families here that have kindergartners that are applying. I know that probably puts you into a stress level that you don't want to have to deal with, but if that were to happen, I mean, you could understand that as a board, we don't have a choice. I mean, it's within our, our out of district policy that, I mean, it's not that we would necessarily, I mean, there's a free way to decide whether or not we can turn that student away or hire another individual or another, another teacher, but would you be willing to accept the fact that tonight we would admit your child with that condition, I guess, is the question?
You guys have to do what you have to do and we would understand.
I thought we were doing it without the condition.
Oh, I don't...
I think we've had a discussion here where if I, if I'm correct, no, it's pretty much that let's get it done.
That's what I think.
And ensure them...
So you think we're not gonna have...
And I could add this, just so the board's aware. If you are of the opinion as a board that you don't want to go down the road of saying, we're gonna do this on it, let's make a decision tonight, and you were determined to say, is it, can you make your budget work on hiring a new teacher on if maybe? I will tell you this, we do have supply budgets. We have tried to protect and we've tried to defend these supply budgets throughout this process because we have not seen supply budgets increase in over a decade now. So with inflationary costs, we've seen our spending power for supplies shrink. I could go into supply budgets and find monies if I had to to hire a teacher, but that would mean that much more of a shrinkage and it would mean the classrooms would be ready to be strapped for their supplies for next year. But it would do it for the sake of making sure a kid in the system. On the flip side, with the increased enrollment, we will see that you have that bump in A and B the next year that when the second year out is helpful to the school. So it's kind of a complex process to think through as to how you rationalize and justify the decision you might have to make.
To me, it's not just a bump next year.
No, it's okay. We just, and I have, I have kids here that go currently and spend half-time with me and my ex-wife. And Emily is Jim's daughter. And we searched and searched and searched to try to find a house in Florence that worked for our family, you know, with everybody. It's five people and my mom's little six people. And so the closest we could find was Log Cabin Lane, and we're like two houses away from where, you know, the cutoff is, which, you know, it's kind of hard to, you know, deal with. But, you know, we are definitely one of the families that would have to split up, you know, her sibling going to here and then she being potentially looking at another school, which, you know, I mean, my kids have gone here since, you know, kindergarten and, you know, we really do prefer this school over other schools, but often... And, you know, we really do prefer this school over other schools, but that being said, do understand, you know, you guys have to do what you have to do. And I guess if that was the case, we'd, we'd either have to try to find something in the district or look at different, in the district or look at different options. But, you know, if you guys did approve it with the condition, you know, I guess everybody would just be crossing their fingers if that would work out. I mean, you, you know, some people could move away, it could work out. So if you guys are approving, just going forward with it and that happens, obviously we're going to be very appreciative of that as well.
Ms. Hall, you've got forty-five kids, don't you?
Yeah, I did. I have to eat my words because it was my recommendation to Mr. E., you know, that we not fill the kindergarten position that was attributed to Carol Fitzpatrick moving to U. And at that time we had thirty-eight, and we received ten new kindergarten students. That position was made by us, to be honest, it wasn't something I was expecting. I'm a little nervous, but I'm thinking, okay, if we've had ten since then, are we done? And good, or are there more out there?
Well, but had it not been that position, there would have had it in something else cut, the hazardous effects, and then like to not count, and we were looking for ways to reduce our budget.
Right.
So that's not, you know, we're not truly not blaming you in that, in that regard at all.
Is that kindergarten A T one?
There are seven students that are currently in the T one. So we could have put thirteen more kindergartners in that T one. I would advise it just because of, you know, the nature of T one, but accreditation line is possible.
Now, the number six of our non-resident policies does say that this will not admit non-resident students. And to do so would require the hiring of additional staff. The provision of educational services is not currently provided in schools starting with the setting of T one.
By the way, I see we've got five openings closing on the thirteen.
That's including, the thirteen is including, is in that five. The class already has kindergarten students. So we don't have thirteen additional.
About five. Just that. So counting this, these five, you'd be up to forty-five. And you can go to fifty, is what you're saying?
I think we're at forty-seven.
With these five?
And that would put, if we put thirteen instead of, if we had twenty, twenty and ten, that would give us fifty kids, but we could theoretically do twenty, twenty and thirteen. We're at either forty-seven or forty-six.
So I understand also for those who are industry taxpayers who are sending their students to school, looking at a possible large class, some, you know, there probably will not be a positive response to that because we've had good numbers in those classes. On the other hand, because the middle level did not pass, there are adjustments that we're all going to have to face. One of those adjustments is the fact that we do, we do make money off of our non-resident students that come into our school district. So there's that to think about too.
So, you know, the board would accept these things. We do have the planning session, the budget workshop in August, two board meetings for which I could devise some kind of planning, like, who we come up with to manage the situation, if that's what you would like to see happening.
And all of these things are current, have currently registered. I believe, they're already counted in our forty-seven, thirty, that theoretically we have, but we're looking at a maximum of eight more.
Even though I hate to do it, I mean, I, I still think that we should accept them with the option that we look at another, um, we can set a time, and that when we do that, but before registration in August, given our ability to, if we have to, I mean, I, I don't want to do that, and I, and I have great empathy for the, for the families who have children, with other siblings that are going here, that those classes are not overloaded. But on the other hand, I don't think it's fair that we overload the kindergarten staff at crucial times for, they need to have, you know, that their numbers need to be of another range that they get that foundation that they need. And by bringing those individuals in and putting us over that, I don't think that's fair either. I, I, I think those parents would probably agree with me. I mean, it's not, it's not, of course, I realize my husband always says there's only one, two, and that's in August. But, but still, and, and the possibility, I mean, I, I, I think it will all work out. I, I'm fairly certain that it will all work out, but I think we need to give ourselves the ability to, to do that. I think if we don't do that, then we're going to have some individuals in here that are be, that are going to be concerned about us letting, getting it to the point where these classes are, are too, too big.
Do we need to state that in a motion, though? Because it's important, all things, that we'll, we have to take a look at and then on.
You know, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we do have to, because we need more probably, as long as the parents understand that that's a possibility.
Now, can we do a motion for the list of kids?
I think so, yeah. For this particular...
Move to accept the following students, list each of these students.
So does the whole board understand where, where we're coming from? Because that's what those policies states and, and there might be a possibility that we might have to compel some kindergarten students. I don't think we will, but would you understand that?
So, if you want to do one motion, you can do a motion that move to accept the million non-resisted student applications as presented.
Further discussion? Paul for the question, welcome there. All right. Okay.
The, the information of the policy is in their application that they fill out also.
Okay.
Higher end of the law.
All right, thank you. All right, so both of you that were here for that particular discussion on the agenda, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but you're also, you know, you're absolutely pleased to meet you guys. I know what you want in here, and you're totally welcome in here.
When will the final determination be as far as whether they are allowed in or not? You know that? So we will see.
Yeah, what, what, let me say that way.
August seventh.
August seventh, you want to register? And I would think at that, I think at that point, we're going to, we won't make that decision. I don't, I'm not going to wait until the day of course to...
If we all put the words on the seventeen, ten kids walk through the door, I'll be calling a special board meeting in order to see you on the eighteen, that we get enrolled.
Yes.
No, I was just saying, because we would need some time to obviously make other arrangements at that point, too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a decision right after registration, because I don't want to wait until the day of course going, going, oh, my gosh, where are my child going? That's not fair either.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I move on to review of current out-of-district students, non-resident student applications.
Well, we have...
The third question back there.
Yeah, I've got a question. When you went through the list of out-of-district students transferring, you didn't mention my ninth grader, Torin Lawson.
And she been in school before?
Torin Lawson, huh? No, yes. Not since, not since, what was the name, first grade?
Why?
Torin Lawson. He'd be a freshman, he's coming, he's coming here. He did go here kindergarten in first grade.
But he'd be a new student?
He would be a new student now, yes.
Okay, and I will have to talk with you about that. Um, I think that we've got confusion with what we tell you, and what we tell you is came in in May and left during the year out. Yeah, so that application is not being seen in this motion. I will give you a call tomorrow and I will get it straight down.
Okay, yeah, I wouldn't ask you to pay that in there, December or anything.
It's on the sheet.
It's on the sheet.
But it's a new, it's a new one that exists. No, it's a new one, but it's on the sheet, it's all of your, out of your...
It's on the sheet.
It's not that, it's true. I can bring that up if the June twenty-seventh, next, I'll, you can call tomorrow and get that straight down. We've got a list of new applications here, and whether it's in this, right here I have. And so, you know, we can go ahead and, if the board wants to do that application, I've got to check this back. I've got to check this back to make sure that we can do a motion to bring him, this under nice motion if you want. And if it's a good application, so I'll work that out.
And we, we can, we can do that. Is there a motion? Yeah, I want to do a motion.
Torin Lawson. He's, he's very good. Three point eight two.
I mean, you guys need to go back to...
Yeah, he's come and visited us a couple of times already. And then he got, looked at how we got schedules set up and everything, so looked at all his records and was all...
I'll move that we accept Torin Lawson. That's a good student. I don't know how long it is, but we did.
We already have that one.
Okay. Well, I, I move that we accept Torin Lawson's application to the T one.
Paul for the question, welcome there.
Thank you. Thank you all of us for the confusion. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to go, there's a, there's a queue here. Um, I'm going to have a third grader and a sixth grader, I guess, a second transfer in. I didn't hear anything about them. Their application, it would be for Langicino and Trevor Merton.
They're in, they were included on the motion.
Oh, they were? Okay, so they are a go. Thank you. Thank you. But thank you for that. Okay. Any other points that we might have... Okay. Now we're going to move on to a review of a current out-of-district student, non-resident student application.
Yeah, a review of current out-of-district students, existing non-resident student application. We have a couple of students who I would recommend the board going through an executive session and discussion, discussions. I would ask, if time, Patty Mullins here with her daughter, Kaidon. Patty, would you like to discuss it in public or in private?
Executive.
Executive session, okay. At this time...
At this time, we'll ask, we'll, we'll ask the chairman to leave the meeting, Patty Mullins, the parent, and the child. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We were going, we're going to, we have on our agenda about three back, three or four things down, the Safe Routes to School Trail Report, and we're going to go ahead and ask, we're going to redo that on our agenda so we can get that taken care of first, so those individuals that are involved with that don't have to stay through the, the whole meeting. So, our safe routes to school.
Okay, and the safe routes to school, I don't know, is Trevor Iman here?
Yeah.
Trevor Iman with WGM. And then we also have specialty excavation, that is, the contractors involved. Just so that the public is aware of what's transpiring. A few years ago, my office applied for a Safe Routes to School grant, to put some walking trails around the school. The grant was a great idea, a lot of work went into it for community member Roger DeBrito. We worked on this plan, put it together, and went up and shared it with the county commissioners and hoping that they would support in, just writing a letter of, of support for our grant. The commissioners liked the idea so much that they wanted to get involved on a greater level than that. So they offered to bring some CTEP funding behind this project. They believe CTEP and the funds that are available to the county should do things that improve their communities in the valley. They felt that the waterways around Florence were an important part of improving the quality of life for the citizens of Valley County, so the commissioners put together a plan and appropriated just over three hundred thousand dollars for this project. Sad to say, though, the State Department of Transportation did not see its way to fund the project, therefore fell totally on the shoulders of the county commissioners, who stayed with us and backed it up and decided they were going to push forward on it. Over the course of the last couple of years, we've been in the process of, you know, looking at the project, engineering the project, making sure it met all the requirements by the state. The county hired WGM, Trevor, Trevor's engineering firm, to go ahead and, they engineered this project for us. And we are now at the point where we're going to see some, some asphalt laid down and some trails built around here. This summer, there is a plan to try to connect the trail system in front of the Baptist Church all the way up to the park. So there will be a trail on the school district property, a paved trail that will go all the way up to Iowa Avenue and right close to the park, so that anybody who wants to walk from the park to the school will have a paved path to use. So it is also going to extend down the west side of Old Highway ninety-three along the school's property, and then the Bitterup Pines Trailer Court down to Tie Shoot, and it will tie into the corner of Tie Shoot there. Now, the nice thing about this whole trail is that it's going to provide some drainage plan, where it's going to take some of those big puddles of water that you see alongside of the road and capture them. It's also going to put some nice curbing in, and it's also going to make a much better, safer crosswalk design in three different areas for kids with lighting and all of those things that will go into that. We're going to have some traffic control in terms of signage and all those things that go into it. So I have Trevor here today that is going to talk about the startup date of this project, and he has specialty contracting, who is the contractor, who won the bid to do the project. And this would be the best time for anybody who wants to ask a question to do so, these would be the individuals you'll see out there digging up your road with some, like John said, I'm Trevor Iman with WGM Group. This is Greg Doughty with Specialty Excavating. We designed the project and it went to bid and was let earlier this month. The notice to proceed is going to happen on the twentieth or twenty-seventh of this month, so next Monday or the Monday after. They have sixty working days, sixty calendar days, sixty calendar days to complete the project, barring any extensions due to unforeseen circumstances. And I guess I'll let Greg kind of give you a real quick overview of where they plan to start, and if you've got any questions, feel free to ask.
As Trevor said, I'm Greg Doughty, Specialty Excavating. John kind of gave a recap of where we're going with the trail. We anticipate starting down at the north end on the east side of Old Highway ninety-three, so pretty much the concrete portion right in front of the school will be the first task to try to tackle. So going forward, we're only going to work one side at a time, we're not going to try to work both sides of the street, that'd just congest everything too tightly. So we'll be able to shift the lanes slightly one way, either east or west, depending on which side of the road we're working on. Fortunately, this is a fifteen mile an hour speed zone through here, so anticipating traffic could be relatively slow for us to be able to conduct a safe work environment. But yeah, it'll be under construction throughout the summer. This is the third project that I've done in the last couple of years around schools in terms of providing trails and pathways for schools, so it's an exciting project, and I, I think the, the CTEP program is a neat program that the state has that allows us some funding for communities to improve their pedestrian traffic around and into their schools. So it's a neat program, I'm excited about the project, and feel free to contact me or Trevor with any questions. I'll leave you some business cards to pass around to the board members if you want.
What other schools have you gone? Just that is curious.
Carvallo School and then Russell School in Missoula. Same.
Did you say you're going to start on the east side of the road?
Yeah, it's...
Pick up at the end of this sidewalk and go on down?
It'll actually remove all the existing sidewalk on the east side of the road in front of the school and replace it with a seven-foot wide sidewalk and curb and sumps to take care of the drainage problems at that point. And then it'll also replace that set of stairs directly in front of the main entrance to the buildings and create ADA accessible ramps down to that entrance.
And that was one of the nice things about this whole project, is, you know, you never know until you start digging into something what you, what you have or you don't have. We always saw that big blue area out there of handicap parking. It's not handicap parking because it doesn't meet ADA... It's not handicap parking because it doesn't meet ADA compliance for width. The width of that parking stall is not wide enough to meet ADA compliance. There so, therefore, you know, we're going to shift all of the handicap accessible parking into what is currently the staff parking area and we'll put some handicap parking stalls in that area to meet that compliance code we need to. So that's one of the nice things that we're seeing out of this project is we have some need, if somebody were to, in the, in the future, have made an issue for us and said, you know, we need to do this for us, we would have been required to make the improvements. But we're able to do it now that we have this money from CTEP to take care of this issue for us.
I was just curious, is it tied into the county trails plan that was approved earlier this year then? Does it totally stand alone?
This, I believe, is a standalone project. So, but it, the interesting thing about it is it kind of does tie into the county trail plan because it will tie this school directly to the trail that goes along Highway ninety-three where currently the school isn't tied into it really because of the gaps of, you know, we don't have a paved or a concrete walkway down to the path along Long Avenue then we really didn't have it here before either. So it's, it's going to help to broaden the use of that path if people want to.
Is that sidewalk on the east side going to go clear down into Tai Shu?
That's going to stop about, there's going to be a crosswalk right at the end of the school property, so at the fence line right past the, I guess, past the parking lot. We're going to put a crosswalk in and then the path on the west side will extend all the way to Tai Shu.
And just so you're aware, we do have several phases to a pathway plan for Florence and one is to do Long Avenue, but there is another plan to try to take from the school's property down to Eden's Lane and across the crick there. Because a few years ago, about three years ago, when we studied this and took a look at the issues with the trails in Florence, we did it in the wintertime, we took a look at where are people walking in the snow? Where are the foot traffic going in the snow? That's an easy way to tell what type of traffic you have. And we noticed there's a lot of kids that will walk down from Eden's Lane there to the school. And in the wintertime, when there's a burn plowed up on the side of the road, where does it force the kids to walk? It forces them to walk in the line of traffic. So now you're dependent upon attentive drivers for the safety of those kids. And to be honest with you, we've got a lot of high school drivers and I don't know with the cell phone age and everything, how attentive that really is and how safe that really is. The county commissioners heard these discussions and they recognize, they want to be part of a solution. They certainly do not want to turn a blind's eye to these types of issues and that's why they stepped right up tonight. And I will tell you, I was very proud of the fact that, you know, they didn't blink an eye on this one. I believe they got it right when they decided to partner up with the school. And I believe everybody who has a voice, call a commissioner and thank them for their involvement on this project because it was a good, good choice on their part to do so.
That walking area just north of Tai Shu there is dangerous right now because I've seen the kids, when they walk to school and they walk home, they'll get over and walk single file because there's just room for them without the drop off to the crick and with the bridge and stuff there over the culvert. And there's really not much space at all. They're barely off of the line on the highway.
And so hopefully in the future, you know, we can get more effort put together. You know, I continue to apply for safe routes to school monies and we're hoping that we can continue to take care of areas that we see there as need. Up Tai Shu to Florence Carlton Loop is another area that we have targeted on the plan. You know, we believe that Tai Shu is a congested area and it's a high traffic area and you do see a lot of kids that decide not to catch the bus and try to walk to school in the winter. And so not a good deal to walk down.
What's really dangerous about Tai Shu also is that in the morning, drivers coming down are facing the sun and they can't really see very well and there's not much really to get off the road. And same with the evening when they're coming up, they got the sun in their eyes and it does have a lot of traffic.
You're right.
Any other questions?
Will the new crosswalks be manned?
Yes, we're planning on manning one in front of the high school office there.
Along with the current one or instead of?
Correct, with the current one also.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Tommy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.